Well. Love it. Didn't look that up.
Okay.
You see it.
Now, the official town box, oh seven o'clock, so we'll get started and we'll ask the. We're ready over at the table there, I'll ask town clerk to call it all. There you go. That's just. Okay, get it.
Alex with that?
Here.
Danny Briscoe?
Here.
Andrew Pines? Phil Heisen?
Yep.
And Amy Morris?
Here.
And Eddie Payne?
Here.
Thank you. And I will ask you if you pardon us in the presence of the.
The United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, a nation under God, indescribable, liberating, just as well.
Thank you. I'm doing A. Right now, we're meeting on set calendar, which is basically just the approval of this agenda for tonight. Second?
Second.
And any discussion?
Is it? Are we gonna get the minutes or the, uh, the budget sometime? Or the, yeah, they're not budgets, that's the financial report. Is that fun ladies? Okay, minutes and the financial.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have a, uh, public forum session now, before we get into that, Chief, if we want to do anything, but wait a few minutes, please, okay? Uh, this is a part of our meeting where anyone from the public, now we have a couple public hearings, Mike, so if you wish to speak to anything about those, wait until we open the public hearing. If you have anything else on your mind and want to speak, come forward. And, uh, state your name and tell us what you want to talk about. Alright, well, we'll just keep going down to the next item, my report. Not a whole lot since we met last week, other than I did have a good meeting this morning with a couple of representatives from UVA, um, it's called tele- telehealth? Uh, about putting a facility in Scottsville, uh, one of these, uh, tele mid facilities where people may not be able to tra- uh, get to, to the hospital in UVA, at UVA, or Martha Jefferson, or see their doctor in Charlottesville, and go to this site locally and do telemedicine. With, uh, talk to the doctor, you know, like we do our Zoom meetings, and we're looking at several spots around town where that might fit in. So this was just a preliminary meeting, but it did, uh, did look good. Uh, they really want to put a facility down. I'll keep you posted on that. Uh, Madam Clerk, do you have any sort of report? Uh, Javier's got back from the trip, I guess, yesterday, day before yesterday, and he is, uh, on the screen because he he brought a body bag with him. And we didn't want him to bring a bug here tonight.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'll bring it to Charlottesville, not to Scottsville. Do you guys a favor?
We appreciate that. Do you have a report, uh, so even though you're kind of way?
Yeah, so I think, um, I first want to thank Ron for attending that telemedicine meeting. From what I can tell, it's been a few years of coordination, including the previous town administrator and then strategic partners, so even like here, YNC, UVA, Martha Jefferson, whole bunch of people, and they're kind of doing a preliminary, uh, discussion. So I filled Ron in, but it was kind of perfect that he was able to attend and hear a little bit more about it. But I'm grateful to hear that UVA is seeing that there's a need for some kind of health services, and they're trying to find a kind of a business model that would work down here. So, uh, fingers crossed that this is one of more meetings they'll have in and around the area, because I know that's something we've brought up in strategic planning, and then just people have told me before in town, uh, we just need more health services down here, so. Um, but other than that, I want to thank, uh, uh, Ron and Melody for helping me with the audible today. Um, and then I'll follow up, I'm slowly following up with emails. So if you have some questions in my inbox, I'll slowly get through them, um, and reach out to you guys once I'm back.
Okay. Madam Clerk, do you have any, uh, anything you need to tell us that we don't know already?
I will say, if you guys need, I'm working on financials, and I'm also working on, I have, you know, the profit and loss actual versus budget. And I'm also trying to go through QuickBooks and get us a graphic situation set up to where you can see, okay, this is your income, this is your expenses. So it'll tell you right down the line where we're at. That's what I've been working on, and do you have any questions about the budget? Javier or either one of you?
When, when you do a chart like that, I know you've got the individual months set on, but can you have like a running total at the end? Can you have a graph at the end that shows income and expenses just for the six months altogether? Rather than still, let us try to figure out if this one is here, and this one is here, and this one is here.
I have to see if I can add them.
Yeah, see if you can add that on the end, because that's help, that would be helpful for me.
That bottom chart may be the way to do that, Melody.
Okay. Alright, let's move on, you know, if we have, let's, uh, where has anything else you want?
Okay.
Okay. Start with, uh, Mr. Bessett on the end, any news on the ARB since we last met?
ARB is doing wonderfully. Josh Beck has really stepped up as the chair, uh, one of our new members, who actually was voted in vice chair as well. Um, it's good to see some new faces there. As far as business, we're doing, I think, very well. Made an effort to make it, you know, an appointment with the ARB, something that's speedy and, you know, well conducted, and that we've done, uh, Tiger Fuel came in, I don't know if it was this last meeting, maybe the meeting before, had seven signs, they wanted to agree. Um, we came up with, I think, six that we were okay with, I think one of them exceeded the square footage. Um, so we gave approval based on six, instead of they wanted to come back, or absolutely didn't want to hear them, and I think they thought it was just fine, and, uh, continue with that. ID rehab, uh, physical therapy, places coming into the shopping center out there, it'd be pretty designed for that as well. Good couple of terrible things, so. Yeah, things good.
It looks like Tiger's getting ready to put some asphalt down up there.
Yep, getting close.
Alex, what kind of sign did we end up, shoot me, Dan?
Go ahead.
What kind of sign, um, did they come up with, you know, as their main sign for gas prices and?
So I think Javier, you might speak on that, uh, it's on the corner, I think is what you're referring to, the main sign.
Yeah, we had a height problem at one time, and we wanted to turn it into a, you know, a wider sign.
That was separate from the signs that you were referring, these were all long buildings, so.
Long building, okay.
So, I don't know where we left, let me talk about that a little bit, Javier, do you remember what we came to with that? I think.
Yeah.
I think there's an approved plan already.
You're on the right track, Alex. So what, I went back through old records and we approved, uh, because we allow, uh, front, depending on having how many frontage on, let me flip that back. Depending on the frontage on your building lot, you're allowed an additional side. So what we did was, we shrunk it down. Think it was thirty-two square feet, but don't quote me. I have the, uh, sign permit up in my office, or the approved ARB permit. But we ended up with what you guys were discussing maybe two years ago now, or a year and a half, where it would be, um, almost like a V-shaped, so it shows the gas station, uh, um, prices on both sides of the frontage, and then it fits within the parameters um, that we had for ARB, because I remember one of the issues was that they were, it was like Eddie said, it was too big.
Yeah. And the depiction I saw was like a ground level, I don't think it was on post or anything, but.
Yeah, that's, that's the one I missed. I remember seeing their layout for the taller sign, but I never saw a their rendition of the new signs, so.
So it's, it's similar to the other rendering, just shrunk down, so the dimension shrunk. Um, and then ARB has been following that, because our ARB rules also is that we only allow a maximum amount of signage in between various sides. So, we've been piecemealing together and making sure we're tracking that, um, they're staying within compliance with the sign. So it's, it ended up being a lot of math for us, a lot of addition, let's be honest, um, over at ARB, but um, I have the approved sign permit in the office when I get back.
Did the gas prices shrink with the sound?
They're a little bit off. I was looking at them when reviewing it, and I thought it was a little bit funny, the numbers on it.
Yeah. I have a question, Alex, I don't know if you guys even discussed it yet, but, um, somebody mentioned it the other day, and I thought about it too, but if, if you looked at the, if you talked to them, or were they looking into the, the lights there, because of our dark sky organs, and it could be hugely lit up there, or it could be, I know we've had, uh, we put shields over lights, so they're not.
So I know the ARB did a bunch of work with them when they were making their plan, that's before I was on the committee.
Okay.
I think they came to a resolution, I guess, on college, they they have to comply with the dark sky.
Okay, good, good. And that would be up to Javier, of course, that.
On that at all.
Yeah, okay, and I, I think that.
They understand.
That's great, because there's, you know, residents around there.
Mm-hmm.
And I, I don't know if you know, but you know what the Howard's are?
I do not know, actually.
Okay. But anyway, hopefully they'll turn off the lights at reasonable time.
Hmm.
Any other questions for Alec?
Alex, I just had one thing. I asked Melody to get on the ARB calendar for next session, uh, about the E nine-one-one signs for historic properties. Yeah, okay.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Mr. Briscoe, be thankful.
Mr. Mayor, several of the agenda items that we covered in the planning commission are common here, so do you think I should talk about them then or now?
Just, uh, wait until we have a discussion, although it was part of the appearance.
Okay.
Why don't we just wait till we have our discussion before our vote?
Okay, I will do that. And one thing I will say, in addition to the, something that texted in that we talked about, we, ongoing conversations about the, guess what, comprehensive plan. So we spent a lot of time working on that, for those of you up in later towns, been going through a long process to update the comprehensive plan, and we're getting it, not quite there yet, but uh, I think a few months away, so lots of work on that from the last meeting. Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Any questions for Mr. Briscoe? Mr. Heisen, you have?
Uh, a little bit, but the Government Service Committee first, we, uh, we're gonna be looking at the maintenance position, uh, I think we got a couple applicants, we were supposed to do that today, but because of illness, we had to hold off on that, and we're looking at the applications and hopefully have some interviews in a week or so, and get a maintenance person in here. Uh, ongoing things later is improve the website, but look at, uh, the budget, uh, the town budget, and, uh, and then what, uh, recommended, recommended op- options, and we're talking about the commissions and changes and charges and responsibilities, I guess we'll be dealing with that. Um, and I also had a meeting with the Parks and Recreation Committee, and hopefully by this, this spring sometime, we'll have the maps on the kiosks, some rules on the kiosk, and, um, we'll, uh, and we got some other things we're working on with the park. Uh, we have to, we have a, a downline on the overlook trail, and, uh, it's been there for a while, Jack, uh, helped figure out how we could help get that removed, um, and get permission, it's a, a bright speed line that's not active, we could take that down, it's a, something people could trip over. Uh, we're gonna get a directional sign, hopefully, if we can afford it, and if we have money, uh, over there by the Maytag, uh, to point to where you could get to the park. Uh, right now, there's a U-turn sign there, so we might be able to get it, uh, we talked to VDOT about getting a sign there. And then, just today, we found out that we could actually put up our own sign on Harrison, on, uh, Hardware Street. The Hardware Street is, uh, is a town street. So right now, there's public fishing sign there, so we could put up our own sign, I don't think we'll even need VDOT permission, so, uh, that, uh, and, and by the way, that's supposed to be maintained by the town as well, so we need to look at that in future, but it's, it's, I think there's one or two properties there, but we're allowed to put, uh, a directional sign to, a sign to the, the park up on that street.
Just to clarify, the gravel road going off of Hardware is ours.
Right, 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 right after the church.
Exactly.
We, uh, moved, moved that sign by the funeral home parking lot to up there on Hardware, where it says birding trail.
Yeah, we could, well, I, I could, I could contact them, I'd say it'd be good. Somebody told me that the birding trail was also basically the, uh, the, uh, the levee. You know, but.
Yeah, I, I think that's where that sign out here on Main Street came from, saying that there's a birdhouse on the property, the wetlands area by the plant, and, uh, on this side of the levee, and I think that's the birding area.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Yeah, that's, that's misleading, but may, I could ask about that, yeah, maybe we could move it up, up the road and get, or take it down.
Okay, uh, any other questions for Mr. Heisen? Ms. Morris?
Emergency Preparedness Committee, we've been, uh, we had been reviewing the, uh, emergency operations plan for the county and for the town. Um, Chief Kersley has graciously agreed to take the lead on that with no ETA, but it is going to require a little bit of work to, uh, expand it and update it for a few new scenarios. The E nine-one-one grant is in progress, it's due on the twenty-ninth to get, uh, to fund E nine-one-one signs for all properties in town. Um, thank you, gentlemen, to the three of you who provided letters of support, I'm waiting on one from Chief Kersley, and I expect that to come in soon, and then I can submit the grant. Um, through Jack's nonprofit, uh, he's worked community outreach very successfully, and it's resulted in four new members for the committee, so we now have ten members, Jack, is that what we're up to now? We have ten members on the committee, so that's, um, good success, and we're moving along.
Questions? Lady got it, it's unforced.
Well, I usually have a meeting with the, uh, Chief Jenkins, uh, he's been so busy, I, I just waved at him three times, you know? That's, that's the only way I can slow him down, but, uh, so, uh, his report uh, from the workshop will suffice, I don't think much has happened in the last week. Um, it's just, I don't see, um, a spot on here for just a, a general comment, uh, we were talking about maintenance, can I say something toward that? Um, I believe the, the restaurants, um, Canal Basin, Farmers Market, were locked up around November the first. Um, and someone has, uh, gotten access to the one at Farmers Market.
I saw somebody go in there Saturday, and I was wondering how that happened.
Well, they didn't stay long, because you needed a hazmat suit to get in and out, um, and that's, I'm serious. So we, we gotta change the locks, or do, or leave it open and have it clean like we, you know, we do the other nine months of the year.
I did, I ended up finding a key locking it.
Somebody had a key to unlock it.
They did take a screw out of it. I think they unscrewed it.
Oh, okay.
Of the house.
On the, on the door hinge, so it's really loose, so I guess that's how they got it in.
So I didn't notice that, so.
Sir.
But would you agree with my, Jack, would you agree with my description of it?
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Uh, for the first time yesterday, I took all my dolls there, and, uh, we walked the levee, and yes, the restaurants were completely unlocked, and as you said, they were not uh, common for any guests to come to the town, or any patrons of the, the society, they were, um, they were the moment, yes, there was a door that was breached, and the female bathroom was locked, but not all was.
I, I understand, um, and this is just some, some, yeah. But this, this is somebody else's observation, but, um, the construction crew that's working in the area.
I can see. Well, that one.
Well, you, it's been more than once, so, that's, I think that's one of the problems, but just um, not having anybody notice and attend to it's the other problem, we can't leave it like that. I'll be glad to do what I can down there to clean it up, but somebody's gonna have to be there to lock it up right behind me.
Um, let me talk to you about that afterwards, I don't know.
Okay, alright, thank you.
I think too, in budget season, we may want to talk about additional cameras around town.
Um, one thing I forgot to mention, a minute ago, uh, clerk called me last Thursday, I guess it was, and, uh, there was a fellow from the county, one of the departments looking for a drain down on Bird Street near the apartments, and we determined, I went down and met him, we determined that it was in all the overgrowth across from soccer field, about halfway between the apartments and Pumpkin Station. Evidently, there is another collapsed twenty-four-inch pipe in front of the apartments, like the one at Lumpkin, comes down to Lumpkin, it's caused all the water to come out of the manhole in Dollar General. And like the one up there, the county says, we're not gonna do anything about it. Um, so that's what I said to y'all, with the note, note. Um, according to this gentleman, and I didn't get his name, but he'd been down here at Dollar General, he said that his boss would not spend any money, uh, unless it was a real environmental emergency. Well, to me, it was environmental, with all the drain water and the mud and so, if anybody has children in soccer programs, the field's not half usable, because the water's fast enough over there when we have a heavy rain. And it might do well to call, or write, or contact supervisor Mike Pruitt, and tell him of your displeasure, was that. I contacted him, and he said he'd look into it, I haven't heard a whole lot back yet. So, uh, should have mentioned that earlier, but that's, uh, that's what's going all about that water down in front of the apartments.
What about the sign that was covering the hole that you described there? Has anything been done about that?
Evidently had dug an exploratory hole, taken a big old, like, speed limit sign, and, and put on top of it to cover it up. And.
That's unacceptable.
Somebody, some child can step on that and end up
It's been there a long time.
You know, four feet underground, so.
Is the town responsible for that, or is the county?
It's the county property over there. So that's the only good thing about it, they've got to pay for it if it gets fixed, we don't have to pay for it.
But they still have to put a priority.
It needs to be fixed, and just to say that, uh, they don't know who owns properties, what he told me, because he doesn't know whether Piedmont Housing Alliance owns it, because that's, they run the apartments. For Valmar County is responsible for it. He doesn't know, and I don't, I don't really know either whether Piedmont own has leased a property, if they're responsible for repairs, or if it still falls under the county, but you know, they came in several years ago, and they put new drainage come up just past the library, down Bird Street, and down, I mean, down, uh, Page Street to Barrett Road, and that's where they ended it. Now, this is next section.
Yeah.
Causes follow. Anyhow, we'll keep on top of it.
Uh, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Manager. Around November twenty-seventh, which I have a video, I sent it to my wife, because I was kind of astonished by the amount of water that was coming out of sewer drain at Dollar General. And I, I did hear what you're saying, it does seem to be a problem, but it was like yeah, not much coming out of the top of sewer pass, and at this moment, it could be all getting probably dropped down, it's still skimming. I keep telling, you know, my better half, that's, something's not right here, so this has been going on for a lot longer than you think. It's been knocking on, right on the skid it. That this water's been backing up in Dollar General, on that sewer drain, so coming from Lumpkin's, or whatever sewer drain it is, this problem's been working consistently.
It's telling, actually, for the driveway, I grew up to where I live, next to Lumpkin's, where the creek comes down in there, there's supposedly a twenty-four-inch pipe over there, that would run all the way down to sort of the curb in the road, or after that. That one's collapsed.
Yeah, it's, it, it's the one right now.
Dollar General will not return your phone calls, or at least the agent in Roanoke will not return your phone calls, so we can't get any satisfaction from him, and the county said, well, maybe we will, maybe we can fix it, maybe we can't. So they came in and they did that work at the south end, uh, near the curb, where they put some new rocks in and cleaned out the drain. But it doesn't help the problem, because it's the collapsed pipe, stuff that runs from Lumpkin down to Dollar General, that's causing the problem.
Yeah, I've been watching it, like, I, I go there, obviously, like, in the lessons, and get our household supplies and everything, and so we're.
I think that they're supposed to be spit water. It was just a mess, so.
Yeah, Jack, so I did talk to Amakai Sewer Authority, they told me it's a natural spring, no natural spring, that runs from your area downwards to Mint Creek. And so that's what they told me it was.
I know there's a natural spring on this side.
Yeah, there's one underneath.
South of it. Didn't know there was one.
Yeah, that's one that keeps one watering, so that's what the issue is.
Alright, well, we're gonna take a little break here for a second, and do something special. Chief? Mr. Mayor, Council, thank you all, season, for giving me just a few minutes, but I count the time seeking to recognize been told me in special person to where we retirement ended them all, also Alan Moran. But before we go in to recognize, you know, I think there's someone else here that deserves a little bit of recognition, and that's his wife, Darian, she's come with him this evening. Uh, those that are all in public service know very well that those that serve our communities dedicate a lot of time. And as police officers, we miss a lot of birthdays, we miss a lot of holiday events, um, weekends, everything, so without, uh, significant others, husbands, wives, boyfriends, girlfriends, the same, we wouldn't be able to do our job effectively if we didn't have our lives and the husbands and family that actually support us like you all do. Makes our job a lot easier. So I wanted to thank you for giving us Alan uh, for the last eighteen years, and I've got a pretty special person that I want to introduce to everyone that hasn't already met him. Captain Brian Viv, he is, he was a commander with the Charlottesville Police Department, and I asked, uh, Captain Viv, if you'd come down and just say a few remarks about Alan's distinguished career for the past eighteen years. Thank you, sir. Thank you, Council, for allowing me a few minutes to speak, I'm having a little bit of fun here. Nothing more, worth the word, that was my fault. Everyone, my name is Brian Viv, and I'm the guy to blame, the one responsible, the one who did it. Well, Jackson said he wanted to be solid, I'll be the bad guy, I think it's black eye. I'm the guy who got this guy in the police line. Derek, all those headaches and hard days and griefs been through last year and following them. I met Alan about thirty years ago. We were both born and raised in Charlottesville, but we grew up on different sides of the city. He was a Belmont boy, I was a Fox Springs kid, so we never met each other until one day we ran across each other on the golf course. And, uh, we began to play golf together pretty regularly. And then we started playing a lot of golf, and we became very close friends. Alan would often ask me about my job at the PD, about police work in general. And we're often ruminating on his career as contract. And how he wished, you know, taking up a different line of work when he was younger. Alan is a world-class ruminator, invited to the movement. So one day, Alan, of course, announced to me, he said, VA, paraphrasing, I'm sick of it. He said, I'm done, no contract. Don't care, something bad at the police department, I can do this. I thought about it a little bit, thought about his qualifications and his age, and thought about it. Thought about it. And I thought, you know what, this guy can recite every quote from every place, but when we have that. And I said, so I said, we have some CSO positions down at the police department that you could do. We'd be working a long time, police officer, working traffic, traffic control, writing policy tickets, I tell them. I said, the job doesn't pay a lot, working hard hours. Before I could finish talking, I said, okay, when does it start? So I got an application, we went through the process, and we hired one as a CSO. I believe it was probably around two thousand eight. Now, once again, I'm gonna have to tip a little blame here, because I may not have explained the whole CSO thing to Alan right away. Well, we could have had a deficiency in our orientation process, but not exactly sure exactly what happened, but I don't think Alan ever fully understood the difference between a CSO and a police officer. He said, CSO, a community service officer. He said, CSO, a community service officer, is a civilian position. They wear a gray uniform, not a blue one. They don't carry a gun or taser, or even handguns. And they don't have powers of arrest. And they don't chase robbery suspects down the street, and catch them and hold them until the police get there. You know, they don't do that. So, Allen's first year on the job, uh, we had to have a few closed-door discoveries in my office. And these weren't VA to AP discovers, these were Captain Bibb to CSO Barnett, sir. But he had gotten a taste of police work, and he was bound and determined to wear the blue uniform. So, after a couple of years of being a CSO, I put in his application to be a real, honest, good as police officer. This time's leaving. That's a quote from Wild Earth. So, in two thousand and ten, Chief Timothy Day Longo, in a bag of oil, gave him a gun, and a badge at age fifty-five. So, at the age when most cops are thinking about retirements, Allen would just get started. Now, I'll have to be totally honest, I did have some reservations and concerns. Not about whether he could do the job, or better competency, or his ability to handle it. I was more concerned about what the job could potentially do to him and his family, at his age and stage of life. Police work's a hard job, when you're twenty something, so, it's hard on the family, and beat you up, and break you. I saw a lot of good men come good during my time in law enforcement. I didn't want to be the person responsible, responsible for running this good man's life. But, and I'd like to say here today, that Allen flourished in the job, he breezed through the police academy, hit the ground running, and he became a really good street cop. By the time he turned sixteen, he had to leave the PD at mandatory retirement. He was affectionately known and referred to by his fellow officers as the tent boy. But it might tell you a little something about his reputation, about his confidence. So, passed forward five years, uh, he's sixty, got to retire from the PD. And you think, at that time, he might be thinking, okay, I've achieved my dream as a police officer, maybe I'll just relax, take it easy, find less stressful job. And that's what you would think. So, Allen says to me one day, DA, what do you think I should do now? I said, Al, tell you what, you can go back to being a community service officer, that way you can stay here at the PD, work as long as you want. Still be around, police work, be less stressful. That was a dumb idea. So, when he hit the follow, Allen would, now, to put it in old west terms, be a hired gun. He would go on to work for, let's just say, a plethora of, of police departments. I'm not sure what comes after plethora, it couldn't, it couldn't have been that. The University of Police Department, the University of Denny Police Department, the Louisiana County Sheriff Department, the Wintergreen Police Department. And finally, he landed here at Alamo County Police Department, for Hennard and Scottsville. Could've named one, didn't. Now, I could be wrong, I've never asked him this question, and he's never told me this, but I think of all the departments and all the places Allen ever worked, I think this job here in Scottsville really fed a lot on him. I know he thinks the world of Chief Jenkins. Pretty sure if it was solely up to him, y'all would have to buy him a walker with a blue light on it. Twenty years. Fortunately for Allen, he has a wife who has a lot better sense than he does. He knows a good time for him to retire, and, uh, so also goes to retire in sunny South Carolina. So, Al, I just wanna say here, everybody, and proud of him, proud of everything he's done, everything he achieved. Last bit, quite amazing role, which he did, you're very, you've had a child, your ancestors there, and you've got a very solid career in law enforcement. I know you're gonna be missed here in Scottsville. I know you're gonna miss what you've been doing for the past fifteen years. But let me assure you one thing, brother, there is life after law enforcement, you will be justified. You and Darian have a lot to look forward to, and I wish both of you all the best in the town, I know you. Thank you, everything that Brian said, Allen, uh, I remember a little over two years ago, when I first come to this town of Scottsville as the chief. Allen did not say enough good things about our council members, and our community. Loved it, you know, loves it down here, and I, I, I believe that he would absolutely try to find somebody if he wasn't mandated to retire, I mean, I know Darian's got other ideas for him, but he's, he's, uh, served Scottsville, Scottsville very well, uh, six and a half, seven years here in the town of Scottsville. And I don't give these chiefs a world out, uh, lightly, but I wanted to take the time to just write up a few uh, things about Allen myself, and this is to formally recognize exceptional police service of Officer Allen Barnett. Officer Allen Barnett is to be commended for his exceptional eighteen years of law enforcement service. Officer Barnett started his law enforcement career with the Charlottesville Police Department, or where he retired with honors. He then served the citizens of Louisiana County as a deputy with the Louisiana County Sheriff's Office. He concluded his distinguished career as a police officer serving the citizens of the town of Scottsville. It takes a special person to serve as a police officer for so many years, your commitment and dedication to the town of Scottsville, the Scottsville Police Department, and the citizens of our small town will be missed. You've always been a model of courage and professionalism to all of us. Your years of service to the residents of Scottsville will not be forgotten, no. We wish you happy retirement, and all the best in your next chapter of your life. And I'll miss you, brother.